Okay, it's six o'clock and I would like to welcome you all to this meeting. It's May 13th, regular Board of Commissioners meeting. First, I'd like to ask everyone to please mute your phone or computer unless you're speaking. And if you are hoping to speak during the public comment period, if you could email, if you haven't already emailed Teresa in order to get in line to do that. And then when we come to that portion of the meeting, we will, we will ask Teresa who will be reading. But because of this virtual meeting, it would be helpful if you could email or to let her know that you would like to speak. So the Board of Commissioners is a governing body of Clatsop County, all county service districts for which this body so acts, and as a Clatsop County Local Contract Review Board is now meeting in regular session. May we have the roll call, please, Teresa?
Commissioner Nebiker?
Here.
Commissioner Webb?
Here.
Commissioner Queala?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
And Commissioner Sullivan?
Here. Okay, we have all people present. May we have an approval, the agenda approval? Did anyone would like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Thompson moves to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Okay, all those, any, anyone opposing that? Okay, hearing none, the agenda is approved. Now we'll move to business from the public. Teresa, are there any comments that were sent in from the public?
Not for business from the public, no.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the consent calendar. So I think this is where I always get mixed up. We've approved the agenda, so we, do we have to make a motion for the consent calendar?
Yes, we're looking for a motion to approve consent.
Commissioner Thompson moves to adopt the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the consent calendar has been passed. We will now move on to the Commissioners Liaison Reports. Commissioner Thompson, would you like to begin tonight?
How many ways can we spell COVID-19? It's, it's the overwhelming issue that we're consumed with. I'm not going to reiterate. We've all been on all these calls, working with the governor and our colleagues all over the state to adopt an opening plan that will assure public safety in terms of health and well-being and will also work to keep our economy alive. So that's, that's the major piece of business. Tomorrow, I'll be at the Coal Pack Meeting and Northwest Act. And that's enough for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Webb, would you like to go next?
Yes, I'd be happy to. I just got a message that I assume you all did too, that the governor is holding a news conference tomorrow morning at 10:00 to announce the counties that they have approved to proceed to Phase 1. That was an AOC email I just got. And I think that is all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Queala, could you, would you like to go next?
Sure, so you know, the Fair Board canceled this year's fair. That was big news. And at the last Fair Board meeting, they were still weighing that decision until obviously the circumstances changed in the interim with the state fair being canceled. It's a big disappointment to a lot of people that have been preparing for it all year. I know they would like to try to do something maybe at smaller scale going forward to kind of help the 4-H and that have been raising animals this whole year. But certainly, it's a big disappointment to a lot of people, but not unexpected.
Can I ask a question about that? Commissioner Sullivan, can I ask Mark a question?
Yes, go ahead.
I think one of the biggest impacts that everybody is most concerned about is the sale of animals. Is there any potential that we could still do that in some way?
And I'm not sure what they've added, so that would be a question for the 4-H.
So I do, this is Monica, and I do know that they are working on a virtual auction.
Oh.
I don't know how that works, but they are working on a virtual auction.
Okay, cool, 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 thanks.
Very good. Are you finished with your report, Mark?
I am.
Thank you. Commissioner Nebiker?
Yes, thank you. I already brought it up on Monday's call, call-in meeting about, I'm getting, still getting fair amount of email and phone calls about concerns with the beach openings. I'm grateful, I think some people are, are a little more comfortable now that they know that the county access points will be closed on the weekend. I, I hope that is satisfactory for most residents. There's a lot of misinformation that I'm hearing about the reopening. I know it's very difficult to get out all of the messaging, but people are very confused about it. Some people are very upset about it. And Commissioner Webb, could you send me that email that you got for the governor's tomorrow morning? I didn't get that.
Well, are you sure it came from Mackenzie Farrell at AOC? So I assume it went on to everybody. So you probably have it. It's just been within the last few minutes.
No, I do not have it.
Okay, I'll send it to you.
I don't know, I've been having trouble getting emails on my county device. And I, I need to figure out what's going on, but I'm not getting a lot of them. Could you, could you send that forward?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. That's, that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Nebiker. For myself, I, I, I think I'm like you, like probably everybody on this call. There's a certain level of fatigue and wishing that somehow we could go back in time to the normal concerns, but that's not the reality. So tomorrow, I will be on a call with the North Coast Regional Economic Recovery Team with, and Tiffany, Tiffany Brown will be giving a presentation on, on the reopening plan. And like all of you also, we're on a lot of meetings and I don't have the list in front of me right now. So just everyone stay well and get rest when you can. And we'll, we'll keep going forward. So that's the end of my report. County Manager Don Boone, would you like to give a report?
Sure, Commissioner Sullivan, members of the board. I'm going to channel Mike McNichol a little bit here. And part of my, my report is, you know, just really talking about this reopening. It does create a lot of confusion. You know, the federal government and the state government has basically decided to try to protect public health and to also slowly open up the economy. And so, you know, what our recommendation for folks is, is that, you know, being cautious still is not a bad idea. The virus, as Mike would remind us, is still in the community. And so, you know, staying home and still doing essential, essential, you know, travels to the grocery store and getting prescriptions is still not a bad prescription. And so, you know, we're going to be reinforcing that, you know, as we come out of the closure, it's not bad to be cautious at the same time. And so staying home is not a bad idea and going out only for those essential travels is a good idea. So just reinforcing that a little bit, and there'll be messaging about that. As Commissioner Nebiker noted, we have worked with the cities and we are going to have closures of the public road beach access points, which the county really has two that are being used, and that Sunset and Delray. And they'll be closed from 10:00 on Friday night until Sunday at noon. We did write a provision that allows us to flexibly, you know, alter those, those times based upon conditions, and so we will watch that. A lot of staff, just so the board knows, will be helping with the election process over the next several days. And part of that is because the election workers are from some vulnerable age groups. And so we'll be working the election. I haven't done that in a long time, so I have to tell you. So as we do that, we'll still be available by phone, text, email. So you know, feel free to still keep in touch and if you have any questions. I don't know when it's going to slow down. Just as I look at what's, you know, going on, I don't see a slowdown until maybe the end of the calendar year. And so, you know, we are going to be in this for a while, and that's just not COVID. I mean, it's all the other things that the county does because we're still working. So it's just more of a, of a reminder for everybody that as complicated as COVID is and as much as it's something that we are endeavoring to do the best possible job we can for the public, it is one thing that the county is working on. So, and I just want to say kudos to the board's leadership during this. It's been very appreciated. And I want to say to staff, thank you. You know, this, this is not something that we ever talked about in graduate school. And so we're all learning as we go. And, you know, I just appreciate the patience and just the professionalism. And I know the board has said that also, but I just feel like I have to continually reiterate that. So that's all that I have today.
Thank you, County Manager Boone. I, I think we all concur. We're, we're very lucky to have the staff here in the county that we have, and I'm very proud of all of you. So let's move now into public hearings. Do we, yes, public, public hearings. So the first public hearing is on Ordinance 2002 Outdoor Lighting. This is a continuation of the public hearing of Ordinance 2002, Amending the Clatsop County Code of Regulations and Establishing Outdoor Lighting Regulations and Nuisance Lighting Abatement Procedures for the Unincorporated Areas of Clatsop County. Is there any additional information from staff?
Thank you, Chair Sullivan. This is Ian Sisson, Planner in the Community Development Department.
Hello, thank.
Again, I have a quick presentation for you, just an overview of the ordinance. So I'll get right through that so you can, you can move on to discussing. Again, this is the continuation of the public hearing and a possible second reading of Ordinance Number 20-02 Outdoor Lighting, which would amend the County Code of Regulations Title 8, adding Chapter 8.20 Outdoor Lighting, Establishing Outdoor Lighting Regulations and Nuisance Lighting Abatement Procedures for the Unincorporated Areas of Clatsop County. The board opened the public hearing and conducted the first reading of Ordinance 2002 on March 11th, 2020. And the board voted four to one to continue the hearing until its March 25th meeting. As you all know, as part of the response to COVID-19, the hearing was later continued to today's meeting. A brief overview here. The ordinance requires certain outdoor light fixtures to be fully shielded and installed such that light does not shine directly onto adjacent properties or rights-of-way. The standards would apply in all unincorporated areas of the county. However, many types of low-intensity lighting are exempt as well as lighting associated with certain land uses. The exempt features include, but are not limited to, holiday lights and other types of low-intensity ornamental lighting. Exempt uses include things like farming, forestry, quarry and mining activities, maritime, industrial industries, heavy industry such as the wanna mill and search and rescue operations or other emergency response actions. The options I have for you to consider today. Number one would be to take public testimony, close the public hearing, move to adopt the ordinance and conduct the second reading. Or option number two, take public testimony, close the public hearing, and do not adopt the ordinance. Staff recommends option number one. And at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. Do we have any questions from the, from the board? Okay, hearing none. I have, I have a question for you, Ian. Do you have any concerns about enforcement of this ordinance?
So what we anticipate is probably a higher volume of complaints at the, at the outset of adopting the ordinance, if you choose to do that. So it may be a bit of a headache to begin with, just with folks getting used to what exactly the ordinance covers and, and how it's, how it's enacted and how it's enforced. So enforcement would be handled by the, the Community Development Code Enforcement Division. And as you know, we currently have two code enforcement officers on staff. One concern that has been raised is enforcement having to take place at night or on the weekends and whether the sheriff's office might have to get pulled in. Community Development certainly, you know, anticipates the possibility of that happening and doesn't want to take too much of the sheriff's office time in enforcement. And the intent is for all enforcement to be done by Community Development and during normal hours. So there, the short answer to your question is there are some anticipated pain points with enforcement, but we hope that with time and education, those would be reduced.
I know that you've been working very hard on this and I appreciate all the work that you've put in on this, and it's now gone past a year. And I very much would like to do all I can to reduce light pollution. However, my feeling is, just me personally, that if there is, perhaps, maybe we can get out in front and do some more education ahead of time before this ordinance, before we pass this ordinance. I, I'm okay with, Joanna, help me, what's the word again? Continuing, continuing this until another date just because of the intensity of what we are dealing with right now with COVID-19. You know, the old saying, keep it simple. So I, that's, that's my feeling on this. It has no reflection of the hard work that you've been doing on this, Ian. And again, I still support reducing light pollution, but I've, I'm listening to the concerns of enforcement at this time. And so I'm, I'm ready to, to put a, put a pause on this, but I will open it up to the, to the floor. Anyone else like to, and to come, come back to it another time? Other, other comments from the board?
Commissioner Thompson has a comment.
Commissioner Thompson, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, this is never going to be perfectly easy, but this is a good tool to protect neighborhood livability. And waiting doesn't help the education process. There's going to be a learning curve. There's going to be some adjustment to this. Sooner begun, sooner done. I'm really for moving forward with this just as quickly as possible, please. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Any other comments?
Well, this is Commissioner Queala, and you know that I don't support this. I don't think it should be applied countywide. I think the enforcement issue is just another reason why this is something that we shouldn't do at this time. And I think with all the other factors with COVID, this is just not something we need to focus on.
This is Chair Sullivan.
Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner Queala. I'm sorry, who's, who's at the hand up next? Commissioner Nebiker, please.
Yeah, I think that there is business that the board can conduct through this time. And I, I understand that, you know, the overriding issue, overarching issue is COVID-19, but since this is pretty much ready to go, I, I think we could go ahead and, and pass this.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Thank you, Commissioner Nebiker. Is that Teresa?
Yes, Gail Hendrickson, Community Development Director, would like to speak.
Okay, please, Ms. Henderson.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Gail Hendrickson, Community Development Director. To address a couple of your concerns, one thing that the department could do to address some of those, if you chose to adopt the ordinance this evening, would be to send a letter out to property owners advising them of the changes and letting them know that during this initial possibly three-month period that this is a time for them to get adjusted to the ordinance, that we would not do active enforcement until a period, I'm throwing out three months, but whatever you might choose. And then we could actively begin enforcement. In terms of how enforcement could be conducted, we've run into this with short-term rentals as well. And one thing that we have been accepting are photographs from, from property owners who have made complaints regarding neighboring properties. And we actually have just been working on a case like this very much down in Arch Cape right now. And so that would avoid the need to pull in a sheriff's deputy or to have staff working evenings or weekends. I just wanted to throw that out there for your consideration. And if you do have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Director Hendrickson, do you, so you're saying that by putting on, if we were to pass the ordinance and putting a, a date ahead of time, that you would use the letters as part of the education?
Correct. So if you adopted the ordinance tonight, what we, as staff, would do then is notify property owners, let them know that this has been adopted, that there's, if you want to call it a grace period of whatever term that you would choose, before we would begin any type of enforcement action. But just this way, it puts them on notice that there is an ordinance that's been adopted, that these are the requirements of the ordinance, and it gives people a time to, to adapt to the changes.
Do you feel that, it's my understanding, my reading of it, and maybe I'm not correct, but the, the lighting that folks have now will be grandfathered in unless they're really, unless it's, is that, is that correct? Is this, this is for new lighting, unless it's egregious, or what?
Right, it's for new lighting fixtures unless we do start receiving complaints from, from residents who are complaining about neighboring property owners. And then again, this would just put property owners on notice that there is a grace period. So if someone does have an egregious light, they have the ability to change it out before it gets to the point where a neighbor might call in and complain about it, and we would have to take code enforcement action.
And I know that, that, that your department is doing things by video now and phone calls. Do you, do you think that some of this enforcement, if necessary, could also be done like you said, like you mentioned, with a photo and, and talking over the phone?
Absolutely. That's pretty much how we're conducting code enforcement these days. We still get complaints into the department, and so we are working almost entirely through videos and photographs that people are sending in to us.
And what has been the response? Do you, do you find people are willing to work with you once they understand what the issue is?
I think it depends on the person. Most people will work with us to address the issue and to come into compliance. There will always be some property owners who, for whatever reason, cannot or will not be able to come into compliance. But I would say at least 75% of our cases were able to solve amicably.
And so you're not finding that you need to go up the next level to involve the sheriff's office?
No, it's usually the only time that we have gotten the sheriff's office involved is when we have a code compliance officer or specialist who's going out into the field into a situation that they have requested some sort of law enforcement official accompany them, just for safety reasons. I think we've had one case where we, the previous sheriff actually knew the, the party involved and personally stepped in at that point to, to address the issue. But typically, we, we have very little cause other than our own personal security to involve law enforcement. And I don't know, if the sheriff has anything he'd like to add to that.
Sheriff Phillips, would you like to add anything?
I think Gail explained it appropriately.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. Any other comments?
One of the things that occurs to me in this situation is that we are approaching the time of year when we have the most daylight. And that it really won't be until September or October where early sunsets and late sunrises begin when some of these issues might, might be at their maximum. So it might be a good idea to do it now to give people, give the opportunity for some community messaging. I like, I like Gail's suggestion very, very much. I like the idea of notifying people by mail and letting them know. And, you know, probably we could add something like, I'm sure that Gail will design a beautiful pamphlet about this ordinance and be able to get, get that out into the community. I, I think that's a great suggestion, Gail. Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions for the staff? Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Any other questions for the staff? Okay, hearing none. We will now take public testimony. Teresa, do we have any speakers signed up to testify?
No, we do not.
Okay, so we do not have any testimony from the public. Is there any response? We don't need a response for the staff because we didn't have any testimony. So I will now close the public hearing. Discussion among the Commissioners.
Madam.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Commissioner Nebiker.
Oh, so are we going to entertain a motion at this time or, or what?
We, we have, we have the option to entertain a motion and vote on it, and that would pass the ordinance. And we also have the opportunity to continue this to another time. So I will, did you want to make a motion, Commissioner Nebiker?
Yes, yes, I move that the board adopt Ordinance 20-02 Outdoor Lighting and conduct the second reading ordinance by title only.
Second.
Okay, is that, is that Commissioner Thompson is seconding it?
Ma'am.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Thompson. So the, the motion is to adopt Ordinance 2002 Outdoor Lighting and conduct the second reading of the ordinance by title only. Teresa, may we have a roll call on that? Or I'm sorry, any, any discussion of that? Okay, that's, I'm sorry, Commissioner Queala?
Well, I just would say that I think this is something that could be localized. It doesn't need to be applied countywide. That's why I'm against it.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Nebiker?
Yes, I, I, I am very. Yes, I am very, I really appreciate Gail Hendrickson's suggestion about educating people first, which is what the Chair had suggested. And I think this is a good compromise, and I think it will be very helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner Nebiker. Did I hear another, someone else? Okay, so we have a motion on the table. May we have, Commissioner Thompson, are you trying to say, are you trying to talk?
No, ma'am.
No, she's not.
Okay, Teresa, may we have the roll call for the motion on the table, which is to adopt the ordinance of outdoor lighting and conduct the second reading of the ordinance by title only?
Commissioner Nebiker?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Queila?
No.
Commissioner Webb?
Aye.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye. Okay, the motion passes four to one, and we will adopt the ordinance by, ordinance 20-02, outdoor lighting, and conduct the second reading of the ordinance by title only. Do we, the question I have is, with Commissioner, Director Hendrickson talking, is there a date that we have to have on this? Joanna?
It is 30 days from today, I believe.
30 days from today, but if we, so did we do this, if Director Hendrickson was suggesting that we do a three-month thing, do we need to change the date on that?
I would suggest no. I think you can still have the same effective date and just not have an enforcement for, say, 90 days, as was suggested.
Would we need to direct a letter to be written? Or would that be taken care of with the County, the Community Development Department?
So. So it's all right. I was just going to say, this is, Don, I would say that we have heard what the Board's desire is, and we will, we will effectively implement that.
Thank you very much, County Manager Don Boone. So, all right, so we have.
We still need to have the second reading, please, by short title only?
Oh, okay, thank you, Teresa. Commissioner Thompson, would you like to read that?
I actually think that's the purview of County Council, but thank you for the courtesy.
Joanna, would you like to read that? Thank you, Commissioner Thompson.
An ordinance adopting outdoor lighting regulations and nuisance lighting abatement procedures for unincorporated Platts of County.
That's it, eh? Okay, so do I need to adjourn that public hearing and go on to the next public hearing?
That is correct.
Okay, so I will now adjourn the public hearing for adopting the outdoor lighting, the outdoor lighting ordinance. And we will now go into the number nine, which is the vacation of the portion of Third Avenue on Cove Beach. This is a time set for public hearing on a petition to vacate a portion of Third Avenue and the town plat of Cove Beach. May we have the staff report, please?
All right, can you guys hear me? All right, I am Vance Swenson. I'm not Marcy Swenson. I was just too scared to switch my name on the computer. Tonight, first of all, Commissioner Sullivan, members of the Board, my name is Vance Swenson. I'm the County Surveyor. We've got Dean Karen in here, who's also the County Engineer. And we've got, we're going to conduct a public hearing for a vacation of a portion of Third Avenue in Cove Beach. That's down in the Cove Beach area. If you know where Ray Brown Road is, there's an unplatted, or an unbuilt, paper-platted street above that on the hill. On December 11th, 2019, the Board of Commissioners accepted a petition from Susan Phillips and David Rumpke and ordered a roadmaster's report for the road vacation of a portion of that Third Avenue. Hopefully, you've got your maps you could refer to during the time. After that first meeting, we sent out our first notices, first in a series. Those notices just only went to the, to the utility, utility agencies. I need to point out, it's ultimately my responsibility to make sure that list is correct. And I, in my ignorance, looked at Arch Cape Water District and assumed it was Falcon Cove Water District. So, or Arch Cape got a notice, Falcon Cove did not. And so I wanted to apologize again to the Falcon Cove District. It kind of looks like they were late turning in their homework. That was not their fault. That was my fault. And also apologize to Dean because he couldn't show the Falcon Cove Beach District's concerns in his report, and to you, because you didn't see it. So one of the strengths of the whole vacation process is that it purposely goes slow, and there's a few different methods of notification, just in case something like this happens where somebody goofs up like I did. So after that County Engineers' roadmaster report was accepted, we sent out our second series of public notices, and that was multiple different ways. And that was when Falcon Cove Beach Water District saw one of those posted notices and got ahold of us. And we had a meeting with a member of their Board, Charles Dice, and, getting some feedback, sorry about that. So what am I saying here? So we met with them face-to-face and listened to their concerns, and suggested that they meet with the petitioners and also have their Board send us a letter. We received that letter, or we received an email from Charles Dice on March 23rd, and that's in the packet. We also, during that second public notice, received a letter in support for the vacation from John Campbell, an owner just south and adjoining the petitioner's property on Third Listening to the petitioners, they wanted that letter to be attached right in the packet. And after hearing what they said, that's a much better idea than mine, which was just going to be to mention it. So I apologize again for getting that letter to you kind of later than it needed to be. So after we received the, the letter or the email, and seeing some of the concerns from the Water District, Dean and I wanted to go down and get some actual measurements on that hillside. Initially, in our report, just visually, you can see that that hillside is not, doesn't lend itself to building a road on it. But we wanted to get you guys some actual hard fact data numbers, and so Dean's prepared a plan and profile sheet that you should be able to see in the packet. And so, you know, with that, kind of, once we collected that data, and since this is the first vacation that I've processed that's had an actual objection, I wanted to just take a little bit of time to talk about that, some of their concerns. I don't know if some of you remember, the last vacation we did, it was an old paper plat where the, the people who drew the plat really never looked at anything on the ground. They just drew nice, straight lines and rectangular streets. And that's exactly how Cove Beach was done. It was done in the 20s. And they, they drew some real narrow streets, really straight, but they laid them, especially Third Avenue, right along a very extremely steep hillside that undulates in and out and up and down. And so I think it's extremely important to emphasize that a road can't be built on this extremely steep ground within the proposed vacation area. There's terrain around the county or anywhere that simply prohibits the building of any type of road, especially in a real narrow 30-foot wide by 600-foot long strip. And this is one of those, save for some crazy building an elevator or a tramway or something like that. So again, any notion that a road, especially like a temporary emergency road with no major engineering or support structures, could be built on Third Avenue, just isn't supported by the facts that we collected and the measurements we took on that plan and profile sheet. So it really doesn't matter what future event you imagine, you can't build a road there, So with that said, we wanted to give some consideration to the current water line infrastructure there. If currently, the water line is in Ray Brown Road, if there was some sort of major catastrophe that destroyed the current location of the water lines and Ray Brown Road, a new road and accompanying infrastructure would be built elsewhere, but definitely not on the proposed vacated Third Avenue area. And this would be the logical place for a water line. And if it wasn't there, it would be in another, in any number of numerous places where a water line would be easier to build. Typically, after a disaster, homeowners are not only cooperative, they usually demand that their utility services be restored, and the Water District would likely have many invitations to build their water lines wherever they wanted. And so, since a road will never be built on the proposed vacation area, it really would place an extreme burden on Susan and David to require them to forego building their new home, based on the remote scenario that the vacated area is the one and only place for replacement water line in the case of a major disaster. So this hearing is the final step in the road vacation process. After the public hearing, typically, the Board would make a decision to either approve or deny, in this case, you may want to extend it, the vacation. The fiscal impact is none. The petitioners have paid the road vacation fee to cover all expenses. So the options you'll be considering is to approve the road vacation and authorize the Chair to sign the order vacating a portion of Third Avenue and the plat of Cove Beach. Second option is to continue the road vacation at a future meeting. And the third option would be to deny the road vacation. Our recommendation is option one. Dean and I are both here to answer any questions now, or as, after any sort of other testimony.
Madam Chair?
Thank you, thank you, Vance. Do we have any response from the staff? I mean, from the, wait a minute, sorry. Okay, Commissioners, do we have any questions for the staff?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. Madam Chair, I wish to declare a potential conflict of interest from an abundance of caution. I don't have any financial impact, but I live in that area, and so there is conceivably some remote potential benefit to me, but I don't, I don't stand to make money on this. I just want you to know that I live in the area and could conceivably be impacted by it. I don't consider myself compromised in any way toward making an accurate decision, but I want it on the record, as I said, from an abundance of caution.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. In my understanding of declaring a possible conflict, it doesn't necessarily rule out your ability to vote. Is that correct, Joanna?
That is correct. And Commissioner Thompson and I talked earlier, and I agree, it's very remotely a potential conflict of interest. So I advised Commissioner Thompson that, just out of abundance of caution, declare it, that she could participate in the decision.
Okay, thank you very much, Joanna. Thank you, Commissioner Thompson, for letting us know that. Do we have any other questions from the, for the, oh, Joanna, you had a question?
I just wanted to add a little bit of a clarification, because Vance and I talked a little bit earlier, and I don't want you to leave, have the impression that we did not do notice correctly. In fact, notice was sent out according to statute, and so notice was sent out to the required parties. It really is the policy, which the Board adopted, that adds the additional notifications to utility companies. And I understand that they, in fact, were notified, whether it was actual notice or they received notice, of this hearing today. So I feel comfortable that notice was appropriate and satisfactory. And the other one, one additional thing I would like to add is the real decision point here tonight is whether vacation of the road is within the public interest. And that's a pretty broad term, right? Whether it's in the public interest. And so I want to say that the staff report did a really nice job of answering some of the points that were previously adopted by this Board for a policy on road vacations. And he went through each one of those points quite nicely and addressed them. So I just wanted to point those, those two things out for you, and if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Joanna. Do we have any Commissioners with questions for the staff?
Well, this is Commissioner Queila.
Commissioner Webb? I'm sorry, I'll get back to you. You're not on my screen, sorry, Mark. Commissioner Webb?
Well, I just, is this only for questions, and then are we going to discuss it later?
This is, yes, this is the time for questions to staff.
Thank you.
No question at this time. Commissioner Queila?
Yeah, so looking at the map, am I clear that on Third Street, there are vacations on both adjacent blocks, on either side of Ocean Way and Warring Street?
Yes, that's correct. There's been a series of vacations on Third Avenue. The Platts, if you can see the historical, I think it's Gen Item Nine, the historical plat, it's actually, they drew it, they split it in half to fit it on one sheet, but you're going to take the left portion and stack it on top, and it's really a very long stretch of a plat. So if you can look all of that Third Avenue, there's been multiple vacations along it. And that's really, like I was alluding to earlier, the, they didn't consider that Third Avenue was sitting up on that hillside. That area generally kind of comes up onto a bench where, kind of to the west, and then the easterly side end of the plat is kind of on that hill. So there, it's, most of Third Avenue has already been vacated.
And I assume it's vacated so people could build homes, and how large are those lots?
Um, let's see, if I can read this real well. I think the original lots were 50 by 100 on most of them. And so, like most places, usually owners will buy a combination of those, so they'll build a house on two or three or four or five. And I believe that's what Susan and David's plans are in that area, is to build a house on a combination of those lots, and they, that Third Street right away kind of sits right in the middle of where they want to build, and it makes it real hard for them to use the ground that is usable there to its full potential.
Thank you.
Vance, I have a question. If they're going to be building over that vacated, the area that they want to vacate... If they're going to be building over that vacated, the area that they want to vacate, how, if you can't build a road there, how can you build a house there?
If you look at the plan and profile, the, I believe the most northerly portion kind of sits on a flat part and then it dives off really steep for a while, then it flattens out. So as I was saying, the hill kind of undulates out and then it goes back in. Not only does it, the length of the road dives off really steep, but then it's kind of on that undulating hill. There's spattery power, but to be able to stretch an actual road out for the length that it would take, since grade is a function of not only the vertical component, the steep, the vertical, but then you need to stretch out the length to, to make that, the longer you make a road, the less grade you have. And so you could build houses and things because you're only in a smaller area, you know, maybe a hundred feet, but an actual road. That's why railroad grades go around mountains is because they want to make that horizontal component of the grade of the tracks as long as they possibly can. So they're only gaining a few inches per, you know, whatever linear feet it would take for a railroad. And same with a regular road, you want to have to stretch out as far as you can so you can have that grade be enough that you can actually drive up. At some point you get where you simply cannot get a vehicle on it and that's what we're talking about.
Thank you Vance. Also I have a question about the map. It shows the highlighted areas that are vacated and the one that wants to be vacated. And then there's a section that spans across Warring Street that's not highlighted. Is that because no one is interested in asking to have that vacated because they're not necessarily building on that stretch, but that still belongs to the county?
Yeah, so between the red proposed vacation area and the vacated C, that's, no one's wanted that to be vacated. I believe if you look right to the south of the red, that's where John Campbell lives. I don't know the exact details, but I believe that the petitioners at least approached him and saw if he wanted to join the vacation. He responded in support, but it really was his choice. He could, we would have gladly allowed the vacation there too, but for whatever reason he didn't want to do that. And that's how we do all of these. It's usually on a request, by request. Some of you, it's been a long time ago that, I think about a year ago that we did this last vacation, but the same, the question came up, could we do more of these? And a lot of times it's really, the county would love to get rid of some of these old streets that aren't being used. We've got to spend a bunch of time to administer them and it doesn't really take that much more staff time to vacate an entire stretch that's not going to be used than it does to vacate just a small portion.
Thank you Vance. Commissioner Webb, it looks like your body language, did you want it, did you have a question for the staff? Or you're waiting, you're waiting for discussion?
I'm waiting for discussion.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions for the staff? All right, very well, very good. So. I, I will now open the public hearing. We will now take public testimony. Teresa, do you have any speakers signed up to testify?
Yes.
Okay. The testimony is open to the members of the public who have registered to testify. The clerk of the board will call on each citizen. When your name is called, give your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Teresa?
Charles Dice. Yeah, my name is Charles Dice. I live at 3191 Platte Cove Lane in Cove Beach. I'm commissioner on the Fountain Cove Beach Water District and I've got a few comments. The first comment is that, as Mr. Swanson pointed out, we did not get sufficient notice of this action. So the document that was sent out on January the 21st, even though it says utilities and agencies are notification checklist have either responded with no objection or have not responded, we did not get any notification prior to that letter going out on the 21st, nor did we get a copy of the letter on the 21st. We did meet, once we saw the notice that was posted up on a tree here in our neighborhood, we did respond to the county and gave them our position that our Water District does not agree with vacations of roads in our community. This is information that has been sent to the county in a letter form two or three times over the last 10 or 12 years, so it should be on record county. We also had our attorney send a letter in to the county, also documenting the fact that we'd like to be notified of any requests for vacation and that the Water District opposed any vacation. We saw a letter dated April 30th from Dean Karenin to the Platte County Board of Commissioners. However, we were not provided a copy of that letter. We only saw it when I downloaded the packet, the permission of the packet from the website for this hearing. We live in a very small community down here. We have a primary road called Ray Brown Road. On your map, it was called Second Street originally in 1927 when the Cove Beach subdivision was approved by the county. There are two parallel roads, one to the west called First Street, one to the east called Third Street. Most of First Street is not built, nor is most of Third Street is not built. However, at the time that that was laid out in 1927, I suspect it was laid out in order to give the public, not only give the public access, but to provide rights of way for the infrastructure. As a member of the Water District, which is a utility district here in Cove Beach, I can tell you with great authority that despite Mr. Swanson's sweeping assumptions and, and statements, that, that access to that public right of way is absolutely critical to the safety and security of both the water supply and the, and the access to this community. The only street that we have really for access for the entire one and a half mile stretch north and south is Ray Brown Road. If that gets damaged, and it will get damaged by either earthquake, landslide or tsunami, then the only possible option that the Water District or the community has for access to their homes is by along one of these public rights of way that have not yet been diverted or converted into a street. And again, despite Mr. Swanson's comments, and in his letter, he stated that his comments were kind of based on county standards. None of the roads in this community are to county standards and the county does not maintain any of the roads in our community. We can, we maintain all of those roads ourselves. So we believe that we could construct a road in an emergency to provide emergency access to our citizens in this community along that portion of Third Street that has been proposed to be vacated between Cove Beach and Warring Road. And that is a critical piece of our infrastructure. To irrevocably take away the public's right to access in order to favor a single property owner seems to take the concept for governance for the public good and turn it on its head. It just doesn't make good sense to me, nor to anyone else on the board, or to many of the people in this community. That said, I want to make sure I recognize that Mr. Rumker is a really valued member of this community. And I think had he known that the board was objecting and had objected on the record to vacations of our streets down here, that he probably would not have submitted the application and spent all of the money he had to spend in order to get that application through.
Okay, Mr. Dice, thank you. Mr. Rumker?
Good evening commissioners, my name is Dave Rumker. My address is 79170 Cove Beach Road. My wife, Susan Phillips, and I would like to thank you for the opportunity to make a statement this evening. You've likely had a long day dealing with more serious matters than our road petition, so I'll be brief. We've been thoughtful and diligent in applying for the road vacation. Due to the significant expense related to the road vacation petitions, we prudently sought a pre-consultation with the county engineer and surveyor and received encouraging response. We sought input, received support from our neighbor John Campbell. We did not expect anyone to object, particularly since the topography of the theoretical road is unsuitable due to the very steep slopes and because other portions of Third Avenue have already been vacated. So we proceeded with the petition. We certainly didn't find any documented evidence that the Water Board would object for the reasons stated this evening. Later in the process, the county engineer and surveyor conducted an onsite assessment, an evaluation which further supported their recommendation to approve the petition based on its merits. Their considerations included for the petitioned portion of Third Avenue, it was highly improbable to impossible to locate a road due to the terrain. Other sections of Third Avenue had already been vacated. Our neighbor John Campbell submitted a personal letter voicing support to the Board of Commissioners dated February 22nd, 2020. The timing, probability and extent of damage due to the potential catastrophic event like a tsunami was impossible to reliably predict. So that would not be critical in the recommendation. Until such event occurred, it would be uncertain as to how the water infrastructure might be impacted or replaced, or even if it would need to be replaced in this section of the Water District. We would respectfully ask that the Board of Commissioners consider and approve our petition based on its standalone merits as outlined by the county staff and ask that the commissioners consider the fact that in the event of a catastrophic occurrence like a tsunami, all bets would be off and the principles of eminent domain would preserve options the Water Board is otherwise seeking via their objection to our petition today. On balance, it makes far more sense to us to reestablish water lines based on the actual facts and circumstances at the time of the occurrence, rather than attempt to predict outcomes in advance and systematically object to road vacation petitions between now and then. Thank you for your consideration.
That's all the public testimony.
Okay, thank you both of you for coming and speaking. We appreciate that. Is there any response from the staff? Okay, hearing no response from the staff, I will now close the public hearing and we will have a discussion among the commissioners. Do we have any, any, any commissioner, oh Commissioner Webb, I remember now you wanted to add to the discussion, so please go ahead.
I do. As a planning consultant, I have filed a number of road vacations in my life. And I don't think I've ever seen one that is as clearly positive as this one is. I'm very impressed by the time that our staff has put in to answering so many concerns. The staff report I think is just excellent. The, the idea, I'm hearing I think, and from what I've read very carefully, the Water District, the idea that, that you would maintain a very, very actually short strip of, of land in case of a, an earthquake? I've never seen that given as an excuse for not honoring a vacation. It's, it's, I can't imagine writing in an application that, oh, this wouldn't work if we had an earthquake. Well, earthquakes are very unpredictable and, and, and it's not possible usually to be able to actually put on a map the line that an earthquake is going to follow. I, I have to tell you that I find that a really absurd allegation. And in dealing with old plats, which, which we do, I mean everywhere I've worked certainly, there are often inconsistencies, especially, I mean now when we file a plat, we have to do a topographical analysis of it. We don't let people file plats like this anymore as if this was a, was a, was a very, very level area. So old plats are often very much like this. And because the person who probably designed this plat, I'll bet, never set foot on this property. It was probably somebody, I don't know, I can't see it, but it might be somebody in Portland or something. So I, I think that's, it's just a nonsensical to me excuse to, to avert this. And as I say, given the amount of time and respect that our staff spent in putting this report together, I certainly would like to support their, their vacation recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you Commissioner Webb. Any, any other commissioner would like to speak?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Quila. I, I completely agree with Commissioner Webb and what her comments were. Entire portions of Third Street are already vacated and I support the petition by Mrs. Phillips and Mr. Rumker.
Thank you Commissioner Quila. Would any other commissioner like to speak?
Commissioner Thompson.
Commissioner Thompson, go ahead.
So it's my neighborhood and Ray Brown Road is a road. First Avenue is a road. Third, Third Avenue doesn't exist. It's, it's wooded hills. So I agree with what my colleagues have said and support the very credible, well-considered professional determination by staff.
Any other commissioner like to speak? I guess I, what I would like to say is I appreciate the very thorough report from the staff, but I also would like to, to say that I know that it takes a lot of work and dedication to work on a Water District and concern about public land. I, I understand that. I, I, and so I appreciate Mr. Dice coming today to talk to us. But I, for myself, I, I feel like the, the, the case for vacating that area for me has, it makes a lot of sense. So any other, any other commission, any other, any other comments? Let's, I will entertain a motion. And the motion would be to, you have this in front of you, is the motion is to approve the resolution in order vacating a portion of Third Avenue in the town plat of Cove Beach and authorize the chair to sign, or to not approve it, but that, that would, that's the wording for the, the motion, if you wanted to approve it. Do we have someone that would like to make that motion? Commissioner Webb?
Yeah. I move to approve the resolution in order vacating a portion of Third Avenue in the town plat of Cove Beach and to authorize the board chair to sign the resolution in order.
Second?
Commissioner Nebiker has seconded that. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, Teresa, may we have the roll call please for this motion? The motion is to approve the resolution in order vacating a portion of Third Avenue in the town plat of Cove Beach and to authorize the chair to sign.
Commissioner Quila?
Aye.
Commissioner Webb?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Nebiker?
Aye.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye. So the, the motion is passed 5-0 to vacate the portion of Third Avenue in the town plat of Cove Beach and authorize in the town plat of Cove Beach and authorize the chair to sign. Thank you very much. I will now, we're going to move on to the next, to the business agenda. Okay, thank you. The business agenda number ten is the jail relocation project, site demolition, civil work, and project survey, early work amendment to the CMGC contract. And I see that, is Ms. Steele, are you going to give that presentation, or is it Sheriff Phillips?
It's actually going to be our capital projects manager, Dave Diefenbach, with our contracted capital project manager for this project, Emile from Cornerstone. So I will go ahead and turn it over to the two of them, but we are all here. Should you have any additional questions that they need support with?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Steele. We'll, we'll go to the third and fourth option then. So, if you, take it away, please.
I'm sorry, is it me? I thought David was going to speak first, but I can go.
Go ahead, Emile.
I'll turn on a video so you guys can see my beautiful mug. Thank you, commissioners. It's been a while since I have been in front of you to talk about this project. I was very diligently paying attention to everything you guys were talking about up until now, so don't mind me while I get my notes. Currently, the project is on schedule. Well, we completed the permit or bid docs in early April. We have submitted to the city of Warren Ten for permit review. And actually, very exciting, tomorrow is bid day. So the plans were advertised in April, and tomorrow we are going to receive the remainder of the quotes. The purpose of today is to review the early work package. We, in order to start construction in June, we needed to secure the civil work. And so before you, you have an amendment that includes the civil portion of the work, the site demolition, and the survey. The bids for that came in underneath our estimate. There is backup, I think, in your pack up that kind of shows that. I don't know if I need to go through the specific numbers, but it was approximately thirteen percent less for this part of the package than we had originally estimated. We had fairly good coverage. And again, I mean, all the information is there, so I would rather just open it up to any questions you may have specifically relating to the early works package as opposed to you guys listening to me go on and on, or specific questions if you may have them about the project. All right, I'm looking to the side because my screen's over here with all your pictures. I don't see anybody.
Do we have any questions from any of the commissioners?
That was easy.
Madam Chair, are you looking for a motion?
Yes, well, just a minute. Yes, I, if, if we have no questions for the staff, I would like to entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the board authorize the town manager to sign a contract amendment in the amount of nine hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred ninety-seven dollars with Emmerich Construction Company to provide site demolition, civil work, and survey project.
Second?
Okay, that was, thank you, Commissioner Thompson. That was seconded by Commissioner Nebiker. Any discussion among the commissioners?
Hard not to love a thirteen percent reduction in cost.
Excellent, okay. Okay, hearing no other questions. Teresa, may we have the roll call, please, for the, for the motion?
Commissioner Webb? Commissioner Webb? Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Nebiker?
Aye.
Commissioner Quila?
Aye.
I'm going to try and go back to Commissioner Webb, and see if I can. Commissioner Webb? Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye. Commissioner Webb, come back.
Well, we had four, four to, four vote.
I can attest that Commissioner Webb did mouth yes, so.
Okay, we have an eyewitness to that. Okay, so the motion passes five to zero to authorize the county manager to sign a contract amendment in the amount of nine hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred ninety-seven dollars with Emmerich Construction Company to provide site demolition, civil work, and project survey. And so this means that we will be moving ahead. I was going to ask Sheriff Phillips if you would like to make any comments on that.
Can you hear me? All right, good. My screen is going crazy right now. I'm just really excited about the progress that we've made so far. We've got a really great team. Definitely excited that the bids that we've gotten so far are below estimate. I hope that continues. Let's see what happens tomorrow at three o'clock when we look at our bids.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Sheriff Phillips. Do we have any other comments or good, or anything for good of the order? Okay, hearing none. We've had a good day today. Let's go forward and have a good day tomorrow. And thank you, everybody, for being here, and I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you. Bye.